The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
I will call the April 8th council meeting in open to order. We don't have presentations this evening. Adoption of the agenda. Could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Ford. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Shelley, I heard that. Next, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on March 25th? Okay, Counselor Cernick, seconded by Counselor Ford. Oh, why don't we say for the second or Counselor Walizer? I just see she had her little head up, so. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have this evening Mr. Curtis and Miles Victor that would like to speak to us tonight. So who wants to be the spokesman? Miles? Okay, take her away. Have you got your button pushed in?
It is now. Check, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'll try to stay about this far away. Good evening, council. Concerned Citizens is a group that stands for the Canadian Charter of Rights and advocates for the citizenry on issues of significance. Or simply put, we are taxpayers that care about our country, our province, and our city. In January of this year, a member brought the Estevan Downtown Revitalization Project to our attention. Considering the debt the city is carrying and capital overruns that occurred on other major past projects, we were compelled to learn as much as we could about the project. We requested information on the project, which led to more questions than answers. So we created a video to raise awareness to the project and raise these questions. Some members of council after that made notable statements on radio and social media that the video contained misinformation and that the majority of the businesses in the two blocks in question supported the project. To this date, none of the claims in the video have been refuted. Concerned Citizens also conducted a survey of the businesses in the two blocks in question. We asked simply two questions. Number one, was your business consulted by the city about this project? Approximately 50% answered no. Number two, do you agree with this project? Approximately 50% again said no. Based on these responses, we felt it was time to seek the opinion of the ratepayers in the form of a petition forcing a referendum on the project. With only modest effort, our petition exceeded the requirements and garnered approximately 25% of the voting public. During the collection of the signatures, these three consensus issues arose. Number one, citizens were ill-informed or completely unaware of the project, and the city had failed in this duty. Many felt it deserved its own mailer, or an insert provided with utility bill would have been suitable. Number two, what is the project going to cost the taxpayer? Council numerous times has stated publicly $1.5 million, yet the value of the bid tenders indicates at least double that amount and has no contingency for overruns built in. How can council possibly know what this project is going to cost when the design is currently only 60% complete, as stated at the town hall recently? Number three, taking the opportunity to replace critical infrastructure with federal fundings was favorable if it needs to be replaced. We have observed council make statements that the infrastructure needs to be replaced within the next few years and up to 10 years on other occasions. It begs the question that why is it pressing that only these two blocks need to be replaced? Isn't many more streets in the area the same age such as the courthouse block? Other concerns that arose were: What agreements or criteria were dictated by the federal government to receive the CCTI funding, if any? What percentage of the cost was the city expected to bear to receive the CCTI funding? What wasteful expenditures will be incurred in Phase 1 to accommodate Phases 2 through 8 that may never be completed, as there is no federal support for Phases 2 through 8? Number four, ongoing maintenance and upkeep costs, especially on weekends? And finally, number five, what does he expect to return on this so-called investment? It appears to provide dubious benefit to only a handful of the over 600 businesses within the city and a small fractions of citizens that may utilize them. Build It and They Will Come was a great plotline from the movie Field of Dreams, but it's a terrible business plan. We are happy to have raised awareness of this issue to the level of civic engagement it deserves. Tomorrow morning, we will formally submit this petition to City Hall. Will council respect the voice of the ratepayers and hold a referendum per the request of the petition, or will you seek legal maneuvers to undermine it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Miles. Counselor Clark?
Thank you. I just want to come at this and say that thank you for showing up today. I even appreciate that what you did, we didn't, we went and had an open house with the downtown because we felt maybe we haven't talked enough about it, and that's sort of a response of what you had there. We discussed a lot of issues there, one of the, you know, lots to do with construction and how it's going to go, and some of the uncertainties of that. So we did that, and we also realized that there are other issues that are ongoing issues downtown. People are having their basements flooded. I know House of Stationery has, every time there's a rain, the water comes in their front door, and we have various troubles that need to be fixed. And those are tough, and this is a tough project. We're not saying it's going to be easy to do, and it's going to take a lot of support from the community to let these businesses make it through this, so we need, and we know we need to talk more, and we needed to discuss that, and we did that. So coming from there, I said, what would be the options? One would be do nothing. Those people that have flooded basements and water coming in their front door deserve better than that. The second would be to do just the underground and not do anything else and walk away from the federal money. That's, that is an option. That would in fact put taxpayers' money, that we would need to go to the taxpayers and raise that money for the pavement, which is getting funded, the surface is getting funded. So that becomes an issue. If we don't do it, or if we do half of it, then there is a cost. Or do we do all of it? Do it properly? And the concern that you have about us going over budget is the same concern we have. So maybe we could ask you to come to the table, and we need to meet with the owners on a regular basis when this is going on, to make sure they're there and discuss the costs and discuss what we're doing. So come to the table and be a partner in us, and let's go to work and get that done with you there. And you can see the costs as they go along and make sure that we don't, that we don't do that. And finally, I think as far as the next phases, I think George Harris did a wonderful thing, but beach volleyball wasn't, didn't do us any favor in it because we saw, you know, everybody saw that and said, that's not realistic. Let's put it on the ballot this fall that you can vote on whether we want to continue this project. You'll be able to see the results that we're doing, what it is, and the community will get to vote on, on everything past that. And I think that we can work together to make this done, to make our, fix our underground, use the federal money, which is going to create jobs for local business as well, and let's do it as a partnership that we have worked with you to do that, and we'll put, we'll put the vote to the people in November and say, do you want to carry on with any other phases? Is that something you think you could work with?
A couple of responses to that. One, you said you're going to start talking to the people now. Why weren't you talking to the people before?
I'll just respond. We did have open houses, we had meetings. Did everybody show up at them? But we did have it, we met with, on three occasions, we met in person with them. It became clear as the project got closer that there was questions about how it's going to affect my business, and we needed to do a better job of explaining how that is.
And I'm not disputing the fact that you had the open houses, but when were the open houses held? In April of 2022 was the first one, I believe? Correct me if I'm wrong? What were we coming out of?
Yeah, this is a, like, this is two and a half years we've been working on.
I absolutely get that, but in April of 2022, what were we coming out of? We were coming out of COVID. So, and I'm sorry, a lot of people don't follow the City of Estevan page and will discover Estevan in their daily lives. So when you're coming out of COVID, when you face, when you see what this, what these citizens faced, we were locked down, we were mandated, we couldn't even go into your buildings without showing proof of whatever. And then you guys decide to hold open houses right after that? And then you guys did three online surveys? What was, what was the result of your online surveys? How many people did you have take them? Because we seen, we seen, we seen 168 responded to us. Somebody put out an unscientific survey, 168 people of 11,000? And their response to that was 75% were on board with it, but if you actually read it, it's, that's not true. It was about 25% were in agreement of this project, and that's three years ago. So you guys have had three years to prepare this project, and then at your open, at your town hall, when you met with the downtown, you guys only have a 60% project finalized design. So how, how can you even get a cost? I've been in business for 30 years, and there is no way that I could give a customer a cost with a 60% design. I have to be 100% so that I can give them a true cost of what they're paying for. And as far as getting together with us, the only reason you guys are getting together with us now is because we have that envelope there. Go ahead, let's.
No, that's fine. I was just wanting to see if you wanted to work with us and make this project go, and that is, that is what you'll have to decide. I think we're prepared to do this project. I think it's a good project. I think it's something that the downtown businesses see that there's a struggle for six months, but it will change the look of this, and we've done the work. We've, we've got the project there, and I think it's, I think it's good. I think it's meaningful for the downtown, and I think we're using the federal money. Usually send money to the federal government and never see it again. This time, we're getting some money back, and we're willing to put it into the downtown so that it doesn't cost every taxpayer in town to do that. And I think that's our, one thing we want to do is not go over that so that we don't go to the taxpayers, and that's what I'm saying. Come to the table, be part of it, and make sure we don't go over.
Okay, in one of the statements that Miles made, what's the criteria that the federal government has laid out for this project? Because we've, we've listened to a lot of, just a sec, Rebecca, please.
He has to call that.
Oh.
Yeah, no, thank you, Becca. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, with respect to that, now I lost my train of thought.
What is the criteria?
Oh, yeah, what's the criteria? What was the criteria that the federal government laid out? Because we've heard a lot of counselors talk that this is what we have to do. Well, my question is, what is the this? What did the federal government tell you you have to spend this money on? Does it, is it the underground infrastructure?
No, it's, it's not, Greg. It's the $8 million for the two blocks downtown, and we could not take that money and put it elsewhere. And I know there's lots of other places it could go. That is not in the cards. We have to spend it on the two blocks downtown revitalization, period, or it goes elsewhere.
But, but, but I get that, and you guys have all said that talking point, absolutely. But what is it that you have to do to meet their criteria? Do you have to put in the electric car chargers? Do you have to put in the paving stone sidewalks? Do you have to put in wind screens? Do you have to do the whatever else?
No, that, that's a fair comment. All of that can be negotiated. What we have to do as a city is put the 1.5 million up for the undergrounds. And by the way, we had a leak on the underground, you see it downtown, we weren't joking about that. They do need replacement. Could we hang on and maybe leave it a year or two? Probably, but they do have to be replaced. So we were looking at this as an opportunity to get that done. All in one fell swoop, when the streets opened up, do the undergrounds, the water, the sewer, and then, of course, when they're done, the pavement will be done.
Okay, and then another question that Miles had brought up here too is, why aren't you doing the courthouse block?
It was only designated for those two blocks.
Well, I don't know how this works. She's got her hand up again.
Yeah, well, I'd like Counselor Ford to weigh in, and then Counselor Vroba has her hand up, and we can continue the dialogue. Go ahead, Counselor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just, I really thank everybody for coming. I mean, as everybody knows, there is power in numbers, and I see people on, on both sides of this argument here tonight, so I really do, people, appreciate people coming. I do have a question for you, either Greg or Miles. The City of Estevan on our, on our website has a report a problem or here's our concern form to fill out. I was just wondering if any of you have filled that out? When you guys first started asking questions about this project, have you reached out to any of us counselors when you first started asking questions about this project? I know you guys have a Facebook group, and unfortunately, I was denied access to that Facebook group months and months ago, and I truly have no other way to reach out to all of these people in this room to say, hey, do you have any questions? And as most citizens do, if they have a question, if they have a comment, if they have a concern, they reach out to us, and sometimes it's, it's, it's a lot easier for that to happen because our phone numbers are on the internet, our email addresses are on the internet. So my question to you is, did you utilize that form on the city Facebook or on the city webpage, or did you make an effort to contact any of us with those questions before it came to all of this?
Actually, yeah, I did. My mayor reached out to the city clerk at the original outset of this project, when we, when we first got wind of it. And I was asked if we can get any information on it, and do we have to do a Freedom of Information request? And what I was told at that time is, yeah, I'd have to do a Freedom of Information request, and it's going to cost me $45 an hour and 15 cents a page after, and then it could run into thousands of dollars. So you wonder where we're coming from as a group when we look at that, and we're stonewalled right at the start to try and find out anything we can about this project, and we're automatically looking at costs of thousands of dollars from the City of Estevan. And then, in fairness to Jeff Ward, we reached out to Jeff Ward, and we get the information that started this whole project. And now we look at it, and originally, it was 6.6 million with a 30% contingency, and one of your counselors, I won't mention names, said that it's the first time that you guys have ever put in the 30% contingency inside of a project, which begs another question. Why do you need the 30% contingency on a $6.6 million project, which took it to 8.3? And then we see the costing of the project, which is now at 10.6, 6.1, with no contingency? So is there a contingency built in? And if there's a 30% contingency built in, that puts us at 14 million? So we're at 7.75 from the government, federal government, which you guys say you've got, and now we're with a contingency, we're at 14 million?
Yeah, actually, Greg, though, to clarify, that 10 million is the starting number. We'll be negotiating that down, probably to 7 million, and we haven't even done that yet, but that, when we sit down, that's what we're looking at.
I thank you for the answer to your question. I'm just making the point that I personally have not been reached out to by anybody in this group. I've been reached out to by people from the Downtown Business Association. I've been reached out to by people who are for and against this project, but nobody from this group specifically has actually reached out to me as a city counselor, as an elected official, to say, hey, what are you doing with our taxpayer money?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ford. I see Counselor Vroba and Greg will, will have some more conversation. I'll let Counselor Vroba go ahead, speak, Shelley, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I do regret not being able to attend due to a family emergency this past weekend, but thank you both, gentlemen, for coming tonight. I wrote down a few of the things that you said about being ill-informed, completely uninformed. I give a problem with that because, again, COVID was done, coming out of it in 2022, I see that. But we've had also many, many articles in the paper, we've had it on our Facebook, we've had social media. We've had just a lot of different avenues for people to stay informed, and I agree with what Counselor Ford said, where people did start reaching out to me in the last few months. Before that, I didn't have a lot of conversation, and possibly, yep, that's something the city can definitely do better, but since then, I've had a lot of conversations, and most of them have been positive. Some of them, those people have been ill-informed, they've been told that this project is 40 to 50 million dollars. The project that we're proposing right now to do is not 40 to 50 million, just so we clarify that fact. The other thing is, a lot of people say the taxes are going up 20%. That has never been talked about at council level. I'm not sure where that information came from, but that in fact is not a truth. So there are a lot of ill-informed people in the community, and I just think that this is a project we're hopefully going to be all proud of. And I know why even some people have said the word hopefully. Well, you know what? I'd rather have hope that this project goes through and we actually have two blocks of our downtown where we rejuvenate it, make it refreshed. I've had business owners that have been down there. We just had the Orpheum Theater celebrating 110 years. These businesses have been the pillar of our community, and I think they do deserve two blocks of rejuvenation so that we can give them a chance, that the tourism industry, the fact that flooding, there's so many different reasons. And we went to that open house. There was a lot of valid concerns and questions brought forward, 100%, those questions need to be answered. We need to look at everything, and we need to make sure every voice is heard. But these guys are professionals. The engineer said, this ain't our first rodeo, so I may not know how they're going to do it all, but they know how they're going to do it all. And I'm going to put my faith in the professionals. And when we talked about what is the project going to cost, exactly what the manager said, exactly what the city manager has said, and I, I will apologize if you at any time thought that it can cost you thousands of dollars to find that information out, because I think this Counselor Ford referred to, a phone call to any one of us counselors could have got that information for you. And the critical, critical infrastructure, exactly. It needs to be replaced. There's a lot of other areas Estevan needs to be replaced, and that's our goal, that's my goal, is being a counselor on the City of Estevan, is to make sure we try and help to place some of that critical infrastructure. And I do appreciate that you guys are out there digging and trying to make sure that you get answers, but I just don't want to be seen as the enemy to anyone, because honestly, I do this job because I want to make my community better, and so my phone number is there, you can make sure you call me anytime, and I will always make sure your questions are answered.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Back to you, Greg. Okay, so you said about 40 million, okay. Where we got that number from was right from your engineer. Right from the engineer.
I know when we did work with the George Harris Group, there was, how many stages? Five, six? I don't even know anymore. Seven?
Eight.
Eight, okay. This is only the first stage for this council. This is it. The new council, will they go to stage two? Probably not. Will they get the money? Probably not. This is it.
No, and I understand that, but you guys are saying that we're putting, and it's been documented, well documented, since we started this, that we've been putting out misinformation. The 40 to 50 million, the 40 million come right from your engineer, right, right, right out of, the very first day I met with him. $6.6 million for the first phase and $33 million for the rest of the phases, but we didn't know at that point in time when we were going to do the phases, what we were going to do in the phases. So that's where the 40, 40 million comes from. That's not misinformation. And then he says at that point in time that this is going to take, we may do this over five or six years. Well, everybody knows what's happened over the last three or four years with inflation, so it's not irresponsible to say that this project could cost $50 million if you did the whole project according to the video. And that's what we were basing it on was, pardon?
Okay, and, and that would be a leap of faith, Greg, because all we've ever been focused on, and maybe we didn't communicate that good enough, and I apologize for that, but all we've ever been focused on is the one stage. That's it. When we're done, we're done. That'll be up to the new council if they even do stage two. Plus, they won't do it unless they get the federal funding, which by then, who knows? I'm thinking we'll probably have a change of government. I don't know. I can't speak to that.
Well, in all fairness, you, and I believe Jeff has said this on numerous occasions because I've heard it, you won't do anything else without grants, and yes, kudos to that. But the problem is, is nobody knows what goes on in Phase 1 is going to tie us into having to do future phases.
No tie-in, and I can say that for a fact, there's no tie-in with this council to do stage two. This is it for us, period.
So there's no infrastructure that's got to go in in Phase 1 that is going to force you to do Phase 2?
No. We're doing the two blocks, we're doing the infrastructure in the two blocks.
You take that one.
We're taking the opportunity of this project to do that because it makes sense. That's it for us.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that the scope of this sitting council, because of elections coming up later this year, this is, this Phase 1 is the scope of it. So I don't think we need to talk about the 40, 50 million. That's just because that number was in our video, I think that we're even talking about it. So I think, I think we're all good. We're just talking about Phase 1 and what the cost of Phase 1 is. In relation, though, we, we know from, from a conversation with our members, with your, the engineer in charge of this project or in the design of this project, that he stated flat out that there, there is infrastructure elements, you know, whether it's underground conductors, conduits, whatever, for Phase 2, that it would be, Phase 2 and et cetera, that would be impractical to put in later. So they need to go in the ground now when they're doing Phase 1, because otherwise, you'd be ripping everything up again to get them in there. Okay? And so that's one of our big concerns is, is why would we be, why would we be, because ultimately, the taxpayer is paying a portion of this cost. So if Phase 2 to 8 are never going to happen, why would we be spending all that extra money on those infrastructure elements that are going to go in for those phases? Is that a fair?
And that's a fair comment, Miles, and we have no intention of doing that.
Okay.
And we will have the discussion with the engineer. All we're interested in is the two blocks, period, because quite frankly, I don't see anymore, now this is my opinion, I don't see anymore going forward. I don't.
Your Worship, can I just speak on one thing?
Go ahead. Oh, sorry, yeah, Counselor Vroba, then Counselor Ford.
Thank you. So the reason why I brought up the 40 to 50 million dollars is because I had a piece of paper put in my mailbox on the day that they came to try and get me to sign a petition, and it stated right on there, the 40 to 50 million dollars. And I just want to clarify that those stages, when I first seen that video, that we had been presented for all of the eight phases, I too was like, wow, this is out there. And the George Harris Group said, the reason why is because those are concept drawings, those are to give us ideas and concepts that we could have used to apply for the federal funding. We as a council, and I believe it was the ACTDAB group, we had Downtown Business Association involved in this as well, also all got together and decided that the two blocks on 4th Street, and that was also after the open houses and everything else that we had with the consultation for the concept drawings, I believe that this whole thing with the 40 to 50 million dollars is being blown out of proportion in the fact that there's not one person in this room that thought we were going to move on to any other phase without federal funding. Phase 1, the reason it was picked by those two blocks is because it is the most important that we thought would get done. So the other seven phases may never even be looked at again, but right now, Phase 1. And I have never been told by anybody, by any engineer, that we are putting in critical elements to carry on with Phase 2. And so I'm going to be interested after this meeting that somebody gets the name of that engineer so we can make sure that we're actually talking about somebody who we are actually still talking to right now.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship, and that was actually my question to the city manager. After this meeting tonight or tomorrow, maybe we could reach out to our engineers and just ask them to clarify maybe what they were talking about, maybe it was just they misunderstood or something, and then we could actually communicate it back to Miles and Greg, just, just so we kind of all have a clear idea of what's happening and a question can, can get answered.
Thank you, Counselor Ford, for that comment. So, so just clarified, there is going to be electrical conduits put in, but that's not necessarily for anything on Phase 2. That was for the plans of downtown business concerts, all that kind of stuff, that we want to be ready for anything within those two blocks. There is nothing, from my understanding, and I've worked with the engineer, that would tie into the other phases, whether it be the Pocket Park or the Central Park. So if he did mention that to you, if you could give me some clarification on that, because I, I've never heard that from our engineer. So if you have the details on that, please let me know, and I'll be talking to him for sure.
Well, I'd love to see the drawings. I'd love to see the drawings because that'll answer these questions, right? And I, that's frankly, how do you, how can, how can we even, like, you guys are privy to whatever the development stage of the drawings are at. So that's, that's one of our, how can we even, this, this is one of our big questions is, what, what exactly is, is going into Phase 1? I mean, it's hard to comment when we, we can't even tell what we're looking at, right?
Thank you for the question, Miles. So unfortunately, we didn't get funding until February 29th. So I know there was a big low period because we put in our application to the feds off So I know there was a big lull period because we put in our application to the feds October 2022. So that's why nothing was really discussed since end of February 29th. But we knew that if you're going to get construction done in one year, because the CCTI funding is closed March 31st, 2025, we have one construction season to do this. So once the feds approved the 750,000 for the engineering, we knew we had to get the ball rolling so that we could try to be in the ground here like May 1st. To get that done, they got most of the infrastructure underground done. So that's where 60%, and if, at the open house, if you would have looked at the meat, at the, the packages, most of the groundwork is done. So a lot of the amenities were still based off the design, but they would still be put out for requests for qual, for qualifications and tenders because most of that stuff was done and everyone was bidding off the same document, knowing that would likely change. Now that a contractor's been chosen, we can now work with them, negotiate it down to exactly where we need to be with budget. And associate engineering has been told from the start that budget is the top concern of this. Budget is the, is the most important. If you have to reduce scope to meet with budget, they understand that. So that's where we're at right now, just to give a bit of context.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Miles, you have more?
Yes. So my, I guess my question was, in order to, in order to negotiate the contract down, they're not going to reduce their pricing. So you're talking about cutting scope of the project is what, is what you're saying? Is that, are we clear on?
Correct. Well, so the design from George Harris had very specific amenities and structures that were priced out.
Yeah.
As we discussed at the open house, we can now meet with them and say, okay, maybe there's something with, I don't want to speak to anything specific because ASL is now working with our engineering at AE to say, what could we reduce the cost? So maybe it's light posts, maybe it's planters, maybe it's paving stone, but getting it down so it's still a revitalization while keeping it within the budget that's approved.
And the budget approved is this 7.7 million, just for clarity, the 7.7 million grant received.
And the one.
In addition to 1.5 million drawn from last year's budget surplus and an additional 1.5 million of borrowing approved at the.
Nope. So there will be nothing, the council made the motion to borrow 1.5 million from this year. There is no 1.15, 1.5 million taken from the surplus. That was one of the options. Either take it from the surplus.
Was not the first.
The surplus of 2.3 or borrow. Council made the decision this year to borrow so that we weren't ever cash strapped on it. So it'd only be the 7.75 million plus the 1.5 of our contribution.
So that, that was a further decision made because I was at the council meeting where the two motions were made. The first, in the first motion was a, was a motion that included taking 1.5 from the budget surplus of 2023. And then there, the second motion included a $1.5 million borrowing. If I recollect correctly, I was at the meeting and took notes from it.
Thanks, Miles. It was just one of the options in the report that I provided, but the motion from council was just to borrow the 1.5. There was nothing taken from 2023 surplus.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Just, you know, I think, I think we are at a point where we can say, we're not going over our, what we're allotted. We're not going on with anything further. Does that still make you want to not have this project? If you're just against the project, period, then that's a different argument. We think it's a good project. We think it's good, good for the community and, and it's, we're getting, for 15% of our money, we're getting 100% of a job. So are you against the project just because you're against the project because that's what it is? Or are you against overspending in the long term? If those are the two issues, I think we, we've answered those tonight and I think I, I can say that we will stay on budget and we won't go with the other one unless there's a vote.
We've dropped off a copy of the wording of the referendum, so you can see that the referendum wasn't to kill the project. The referendum was to basically involve the citizens on making a decision whether to go forward it. And, and in that process, we had hoped that more information and the, and the final cost on this would flush out. So just, and just for clarity then, when you say stay within budget, in my understanding that the city plans to stay within a budget of 7.7 plus 1.5, 9.2? That's the, that's the budget you're referring to?
Yes. Just, there may be other federal money that comes forward at the time, which we would use for something. Like if they came and said, oh, you could have money for, I think, for some handicappers, different things or, or for that. We wouldn't turn that down, but it wouldn't come from the city, that the city would stay within their budget.
Yes. So one of the citizens questioned was on the nature of the funding. So are you, is the city, my understanding was then is the city is, is responsible to come up with the percentage of this project?
No.
Is that how the grant works?
1.5 million was our portion for the undergrounds. That's our portion.
Yeah. And then that's what they said, you have to pay for a portion of the underground. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you. So the, the CCTI fund was, was basically built around economic development for coal transition communities. So we initially acted about different recreational facilities and said, no, that doesn't really fit into it. So it boiled down to an economic development thing. And as we went through there with Doug Griffith and then George Harris, and the council agreed that downtown revitalization would be a good project, the federal government agreed. So that's where we moved with that. They will not pay for the underground infrastructure, right? So they're all about for, okay, if we're going to build streetscapes, beautification, tourist attraction, that's what they want to spend the money on. So we had to commit an amount that would cover our undergrounds. Our estimates from the engineer was about 1.5 million to do the piping and get the underground back to base and then the federal funding will be used for everything above ground.
Thank you.
But I know there was concerns, for example, of paving stone. And we've all, all of us that have had paving stone in this neck of the woods know that for the most part it doesn't work. But we can look at stamped concrete, we can look at other options, you know, if we feel that's going to be a concern. So it isn't that we have to have the paving stone. That's an option that was presented to us. And I know we've had quite a few concerns on the paving stone. So we could look at other options. And we will. Counselor Vroba, did you have something else to say that was your hand up?
Yeah. I just wanted to, I just wanted to say thank you, Worship. But this is an also, this is a really great project that we're going to get done. And I, I just wanted to point out that even our, in 2016, something we had in the budget was $300,000 annually for the walking paths. And we took that out and we put more money in the sidewalks and we put some of the other money into just the budget. And so now we have our 14 kilometers of walking paths because of the federal government that we applied for funding. I just think that our management and our economic development team and all of the other groups that we have continuously do grant, this is not the first project that we have had federal money for. And so as far as budgets, I mean, we put in the new water line with RACD, we had to work on that project too to get it into budget and we had to rework things. Like there's just so many different projects that we receive federal provincial money for. And we are very fortunate as a municipal government to be able to work with the provincial and the federal government and bring those dollars to our community. I've had numerous people say they are happy, they know that it's only one taxpayer dollar that's, basically we're all paying the taxes. This is a federal grant that will go to another community if the city of Estevan doesn't do this project. So I think basically, as a note for us, we need to move forward with this project.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Vroba. Any other comments, Greg?
I have one with regards to, they talked about the walking path was tied into this. So you have an ongoing maintenance with, with the walking path? I'm assuming you guys are running clean them, right? So there's a cost to the city over that one?
Yeah. Anytime we have infrastructure, in this case, a walking path, there is maintenance, there is upkeep. We feel it's worth having the 14K of walking path. We've had, for the most part, nothing but good things about the walking path.
Oh, I'm, I'm not disputing, I'm not disputing that fact. Has it ever been brought into the ongoing maintenance cost of what this is good, what this project's going to take? Like, you ain't going to be able to win roads, you're obviously, those two blocks are going to get the snow removed. That, that's, that's first and foremost, right?
Well, and, and that's a fair point. We believe we have some of the best people in the province that do snow removal right now. And they will be involved in the final analysis of what that main street, what those two blocks look like so that we can clean the snow off properly. Counselor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship. And to add to that, I think, Mr. Curtis, what you're alluding to is, is how much extra will this cost? The maintenance, the everything else. And I think we're, we're having good conversations with the Downtown Business Association and trying to manage those conversations right now and figure out, you know, what this will cost. What, what does snow removal look like? What does snow removal on the sidewalks look like? Like, all of those little things, we, we are discussing. And I know it really doesn't seem like it and, but we, we truly are behind, like, we're, we're constantly talking with the Downtown Business Association and we, every day I get, you know, questions in my head, I send them to Jeff and we all ask Jeff, we all ask the Downtown Business Association, hey, what do you think about this? So we are, we are working with them and I think it's just an ongoing conversation we're going to have. But I, to speak to your concern about the overarching maintenance costs of what this is going to be, I, I truly think we will be able to manage it in a way that isn't going to hurt the taxpayer.
Well, and Greg, I, I'm not disputing. I mean, kudos to the city for removing the snow. That, that's not an issue. Where this issue comes up is what we found when we were canvassing. We were inundated by people. What's this going to cost? Who's going to do, who's going to do the snow removal? All that. This is where a lot of our concerns have come is from the canvassing of the people. And, and the biggest one was, and I can't reiterate this enough, the biggest one was, they knew nothing about it. And I go back to my, one of my original statements, a lot of people kept, were coming out of COVID. Sorry, we do not live on Discover Estevan. We do not live on the city of Estevan page. I'm sorry. A lot of people don't read the paper. There is ways, you, you could have communicated this. When we started this project, we checked with, with Canada Post. For our little group to have put a mailer in every mailbox in this town, and at that time, I believe it's Canada Post, there's 4,583 mailboxes, would it cost us 5,000 bucks? 5,000 bucks to put a mailer in every mailbox in this city? City of Estevan could put them out through the water bills. We mentioned that in our statement. And if you get a paper water bill, it's not going to cost you anymore. If you're sending out water bills by email, PDFs, simple.
And, and you're right. And things change over time. And we have discussed with the water bills that that is a great avenue to get out to the public and definitely one moving forward that we will be doing. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thank you. I'm also a city rep on the Business Improvement District. And it has brought them together to say, you know, when this is done, how are we going to remove snow? And they've come up with a solution among the group of the pay into the business investment district to do that. Not with, with money from the rest of the town to clear their snow, but that, within their, they put a, they put a tariff on each store and each street on the 300 or the 12 and 1300 block of Fourth and, and Fifth Street and, and Third Street. And then they, they were, they're working it out to say, this is, this is going to be more, but we're going to take it on as ourselves and try to find a way to do that. And when you have empty stores down there that don't shovel and don't do that, they've come up with a solution for it. And that, we think that's what, that's what they're going to do downtown, is they're going to work together and they're going to make sure that this works. And, and they need our support to, to get through this tough time when they're in the middle of construction. And I think, I think this is a great project for them. And I'm sorry if, if we didn't tell everybody everything, you know, you do as much as you can, but at the end of the day, I think this is a project that, that, that they're behind. And I just want you to know that the city council's behind because we've been part of it and, and worked with them and worked with, with everybody that we possibly can that came out to the meeting. So I think, I think we can make it. I think we can make it happen. And I think that's the best thing that, that you can do is to, is to come along and support it and we'll work with you. And let's, let's do it together. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Sernik.
Thank you, Worship. Yeah. Marketing and communication can always be better and that's one thing that your group has proven over the past little bit. A big issue, a big issue here has been the 23-month gap since the grant was applied for and we knew we had it. The project wasn't going to go ahead without the approval. And that's why everything seems to be piling up on us here on both sides of the lane here. The project bells and whistles, as, as stated, could be reeled back in. Obviously, remaining on budget is a high priority. One thing that makes my blood boil, and it's one of the reasons why I'm in this chair, are seeing, seeing projects from the past. Sewers Avenue North, leaving town on the way to Stoughton. That project was all done, the underground was all improved and the top, what we see, what we deal with every day was put back together exactly the same. Wasted opportunity. The intersection over by the mall, all the underground was improved, intersection was put together exactly the same. Wasted opportunity. Basically, what we have before, before us is an opportunity to upgrade the infrastructure down below and make the top improved. So that's, that's the way I see it.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sernik. Any final comments, gentlemen?
I think we're good.
I think we're good.
Okay. Well, remember, we're all part of this community and appreciate you guys coming tonight. We hope that we've answered most of your concerns. And if you have forgot to ask some, please do so. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Could we have a motion, please, accepting the correspondence from the concerned citizens? Thank you, Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Sernik. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay. Next, under original, communication, delegation and petitions, we have from the Officers Watershed Association membership. What's the wish of council on this? It's $5,000. Counselor Walizer?
Thank you, Worship. I'd like to draw attention to the bottom paragraph that mentions our membership allows us to send a delegate to the AGM. Is that something that has been done previously?
Counselor Ford, I think you're on this, right? Have you went? No? You're not?
Never.
Okay. Who do we have city clerk on here?
Shane.
Shane?
Water treatment, state manager.
Okay. Shane is on this and I don't know if he's ever attended the annual meeting?
I thought he did, but I'll go check.
I don't know.
Okay. But good point, Counselor Walizer. I guess we can make it a point, if you like, that we do have someone from the city attend. Go ahead, Counselor Walizer.
My motion would be that we renew our membership and commit to sending one delegate to the AGM in June.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. Have we got a second for that? Councilor Ford? Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have the Community AED for parks. So we have got a few AEDs around the city. Erin, how many would we have? Would you know offhand?
Twenty.
Twenty. Probably twenty would. Okay, would we have that many? Probably. We have quite a few, right? At Affinity, I don't know exactly how many, but quite a few.
Yes, we would have five for sure.
Yeah. Yeah. And here's an opportunity, and I know councils all read this, and they will do a lot of the groundwork and get them in place. And I know Councilor Walizer had questions about after this period, is it three, four years? And maybe we have to find out what is the catch? Do we have to pay them a monthly fee for this AED that will be going in? Will it be cost prohibitive? I'm not sure. They don't mention that. But if you like, we can get further information maybe for the next meeting. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. I also have a question about the cost. I know this is various, a very specific grant. And a lot of the times, grant writers, they ask for a percentage of what what a project costs. So I'm just wondering if if the lady who reached out to us, she had said, you know, well, I'll complete 95% of the application for you. Are we required to pay her a fee or a percentage of that? That's my biggest question.
That's a good point. She never said if there was any money involved, but perhaps we can do a bit of legwork, find out if she's getting a piece of this, and then after this has been in place a while, what is the ongoing costs? And then we can maybe bring that back to the next meeting.
I'll make the motion to just table this till the next meeting until we get all our answers.
And Councilor Roba, you'll second that, or?
Yeah, I just had one comment. Definitely tabling is good. But my comment would be where exactly, if we can just get information on that too, is where exactly we would put it in Estevan? Because we already have quite a few of them in our, well, we have one in every one of our facilities, I believe, and then other local businesses have them. So I just was concerned about like exactly use our cost factor, but also where we put it. And if there's a problem in the other communities that already have them, with somebody damaging them, because if they're just in the middle of a park somewhere, that could happen too. So.
Okay, sure.
I affected to table it with more information.
Okay, and we can talk to one of them. I think one was Maple Creek, wasn't it? Anyway, we can maybe talk and see how that's panned out for them and bring that back as well. And then maybe we can talk to our people such as Erin and see if there is a good location that we haven't nailed yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Downtown Estevan DBA, the events permit for July 20. And we have Melissa and Robert here stepping up to the mic, pressing the button, and away we go. Go ahead, please.
Awesome. So we are here tonight to talk to council about our events permit for the street dance in 2024. We're excited to be able to bring this event back to the City of Estevan. Once again, it'll be on July 20 this year. That is a Saturday. Again, and our headliner is going to be Lisa Mowen, a great act based in the Saskatoon area, who's performed a lot of shows and will be releasing more information about her awesome work. But we're looking forward to that. With the construction that is planned for Fourth Street this year, we will be looking to move the event just for this year. In talking with city administration, we kind of found that Affinity Place would likely be our most ideal location that we're looking at. So we wanted to come to see if we could get approval to do that. We'd be looking for a 24 hour closure as we normally do from 9:00 AM on Saturday, the 20th until 9:00 AM on Sunday, the 21st. And then there would be some setup that would take place on Friday as well. Attached to the document that we sent to council was just a proposed layout. It's very early, but just to kind of show what we'd be looking at for a setup for that. So.
Okay, well, thank you, Robert, Melissa, for this. Again, I don't think there's an issue for the permit, but we will have to have you talk to our head person over at Affinity, Erin, who looks after all of the events for us. And then we take our direction from her. I know she's a little bit hoarse tonight, but if you could have that discussion with her, that would be much appreciated. Work out any issues, cross the Ts, dot the Is. Then when she's happy, we're happy.
Awesome. Yeah, and we'll be planning some further meetings with Erin and also with the police chief as well to work out. Those are kind of the big two meetings that we have with the city to make sure all of our details are in order.
Appreciate that. And as far as the permitting, what did you all have for permits that you wanted? We might as well approve that.
Yeah, then the other part of this is for our liquor permit, because it's on city property, we do just need approval from council for that as well. So that is attached just to the bottom of the letter that we sent.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the permit, Councilor Ford?
Yes, Your Worship. I'll make the motion to accept the permit. And thank you, Robert, for clarifying. One of my biggest concerns is the proximity to the railroad track for this event. So just working closely with the police. I know it's it's different downtown. It's an extra two blocks. But having that railroad track in and kind of open space for people wanting to cross and stuff a little bit illegally is just a little concerning for me. So if we could work with the police just quite heavily on this one, just to make sure everybody knows where everyone's at and everything would be really appreciated.
Okay, and I'm sure we can work those details out. Thank you. Have we got a second? Councilor Cernic, thank you. Any further discussion, comments from any members of council? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you again for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under written reports of committees, we have the Estevan Public Library Minutes of March 19. Could we have a motion, please, accepting those? Thank you, ladies, for coming this evening. Thank you for your support. God bless you. And gentlemen, and gentlemen, God bless you. Thank you. Okay. Councilor Roba? Okay, you're you're making?
I was just going to say I can make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Have we got? Thank you. Councilor Clark, seconded. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports. We have from the tax assessor, permission to proceed for title, which is something we get every year. So these are what we're looking at. Could we have a motion from council, please, to proceed for title? Councilor Clark, thank you, seconded by Councilor Cernic. Oh, okay. Councilor Frank, you've been fairly quiet tonight. We'll give you that second. How's that?
That's good. I got to get my name on the books. I have been waving, but I think it just or putting my hand up, but I think it just looks like I'm waving to people driving by. So.
Yeah, exactly. All we have is Trav's iPhone. We don't see a picture. So that's my fault. Sorry. But now that.
That's on me, too. I'm driving. So you would only be looking at the roof of the car. So.
Oh, okay.
Second that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, comment? Seeing none? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, executive reports, we have from the facilities manager, the Affinity Place Southeast Stairwell Compliance. Now, we have had issues here for a while. Facility staff are seeking support in order to address an ongoing problematic area of Affinity Place in the southeast stairwell. We've had a number of problems here outlined as follows. The stairwell's main level exterior emergency exit door has been continuously propped open by smokers, causing over $1,000 in damages to the door and the latching door closure hardware. This is designed as an emergency exit only in order to meet fire code and stop vandals from entering the stairwell or ice level dressing rooms. It must be closed and locked. Allowing access to this stairwell has given opportunity for youth, aged patrons to use this area to play in, hang out, gain access to the skybox and ice levels. After one tournament weekend, it was found all the hand sanitizing stations on the skybox level had been vandalized. It has also been found that they are using the stairwell to access locker rooms when teams are on the ice. The heater in this stairwell was shut off as kids were playing with it, caused a sprinkler line to freeze and blow out a sprinkler head. This was a costly expense, not only to call in the on-call staff, but also for the cost of labor for custodial to mop up the water in the stairwell and hallway. The call-out cost alone for ViPond was $1,200. These stairwells were designed for emergency exit of both skybox and ice levels when there is an emergency in the building, and therefore not to be used on a regular basis. But as we have allowed access to the public to move from one level to another, there's a couple different options to prevent the doors from being propped open and used as a smoking area for patrons. Number one, lock the doors. So only staff and patrons exiting in an emergency will have access to these doors. Vendors and any visiting teams will be lent a cart and will need to unload from the front doors. Number two, there's already a system installed on these doors so that if the door is propped open, a light then turns on. An alarm could easily be installed to go off, along with some signage that says alarm will sound if door opens to stop the use of this door. If this was to be installed, it could have a switch installed to turn the alarm off for vendors to still have access for unloading through this door. Recommendations. Our recommendation is number two, which would entail installation of a horn or alarm to reduce people from propping the door open and stop the overuse of this door. It would be inexpensive to install and would still provide Skybox patrons access to use the stairwell to come down to the main level in non-emergency situations. We would also post a sign on these doors stating alarm will sound when door is opened to prevent unwanted use of the door. We believe that while maintaining the building is extremely important, reducing the volume of use in problematic areas will alleviate unnecessary upkeep, maintenance fees, and potential labor shortages. Thank you so much for the report. Well done, Matt. And what's the wish of council on this? Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just a question to Matt. I know it states that this alarm will be inexpensive. Do you have an approximate cost?
Thank you, Your Worship, Councilor Ford. Yeah, we believe it'll be under like $100. Like, it's just a small horn that would be attached to it just to make it as the light lights up, the horn would go off, just triggering, stopping kids from opening the door, people from using it too much.
That's way cheaper than I had in my head. But yeah, I'll go with recommendation number two and installing that horn. And hopefully it helps things a little bit.
Thank you, Councilor Ford. You'll make that motion?
Yes, I will.
Good. Have we got a second? Oh, yeah, okay. We'll go with our audience on the screen, on the big screen. Thank you, Councilor Roba. You'll second that? Okay, good. And I see Kirsten has her hand up as well. If there's no more questions or comments, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. You got off easy tonight. We didn't have to put you in the hot seat. Okay, executive reports. We have city clerk leave of absence policy. I know our city clerk has been working diligently on that. Judy, did you have anything to add other than the document, which we've all gone over?
Thank you, Your Worship. All I did was make one change, which was taking the salary portion to 55% if you are attending some of your council duties, and zero if you are assigning your boards to other members of council.
Thank you, city clerk. And that only makes sense. And I know that was Councilor Roba's issue. If you're not doing anything, why would we be paying you? And I think that was a very valid comment. And I'm sure, Councilor Roba, you still feel the same? Go ahead.
Yes, Your Worship. Thank you. And yeah, no, I like the policy. I guess my only question is, is there anything in this policy, because I couldn't really find, where in the event that we had too many councils at one time? Because this policy basically is stating that the people who need the leave don't have to actually ask for the leave. They just need to fill their program. They can work in, the leave will be granted. What happens in the event that a certain amount of councils are all gone at the same time? We still need to make sure that we can continue on with the business of City Hall?
Yeah.
It's just a question if we should have something in there.
I think that's a fair comment. And I guess what we should have in there, the council would vote on their companions leaving. And if too many leave, I guess sooner or later, we have to stop the sinking ship, right? City clerk?
No, I think I think, sorry, just to say, I was going to say, just that the whole reasoning behind this package is that we want to make sure that people have the right to have a leave without having to come to council. Because currently, people have to come to council to ask. So if we have this policy in place, then councils don't have to actually ask permission from their colleagues, the leave is granted. But I do think that there should be something in place that if form is no longer able to be met by a certain amount of councils being on leave at the same time, that we need to make sure we can still carry on with the government of the day.
Okay, city clerk, what's your thoughts? Do we want to add some language to that?
Your Worship to Councilor Roba, so they still have to bring it to the city manager and the mayor before it is allowed. And I would hope that they would see, like, if you had four people gone, you no longer have quorum, I would hope that we would deny the request, like.
I agree. I just want to think where in the policy does it can be denied.
And even though I'm trying to be a kinder, gentler mayor, I would like to think that I would agree with this. But again, we all have our bad days, right?
Yeah. And I don't foresee this ever happening as a huge problem. But I just think that there might just, they might just want to save the problem down the road and have one line put in there.
So it does say, members of council taking leave for approval as soon as circumstances allow. Meaning, if you have not enough people left to obtain quorum.
That you probably wouldn't get.
You wouldn't be allowed. Or you'd have to make some sort of adjustment to whoever's off and hope they come back or something. You guys would have to have that conversation around the table, and you would have the ability to adjust it. It depends on the circumstances, I would suggest.
Yeah, as long as we all feel that that statement clarifies it. I just was reading it and feeling like if basically somebody just took the leave and assumed they got it, and then we didn't have quorum, we might have an issue with having a policy that doesn't state that. But I'm okay with this policy if everyone else is.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Roba. Councilor Councilor Clark?
Thanks, Worship. I struggle with a little bit with certainly not with not with the maternity or the adoption leave. The other leave is kind of could cause us some problems. I would prefer, if we're going to okay something, to okay the maternity and adoption leave and leave the new policy until the new year, or until the new council is there. I think I think I worry that we are, we may be tying their hands, and it might be for them to have that discussion. And we've been, that we might be better just to wait until next New Year for that. But I'd have no problems with the maternity and and adoption leave. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What's the rest of council feel about that? Counselor Walizer, I know you were involved. Oh, go ahead, Councilor Frank. Thank you.
Sorry. That's okay to check.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I don't disagree with don't disagree with what Councilor Clark said. You know, I think that that's a reasonable request. So I would agree with that. The one change to this that I would like to hear from other councillors and what their thoughts are is if, in my mind, I had this three months leave, and if not six months, I was wondering if anybody would be open to the idea of doing three months, and if an extension is needed, then it would come back to council. That is something I would be okay with. But if everybody else agrees with six months, that would be fine with that.
Okay, thank you for that. Personally, I wouldn't have an issue. But what's the wish of council? Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just to clarify, Councilor Clark, you're looking to leave out the parental leave and the medical leave?
I'm looking at allowing adoption and parental leave and leave the medical off until for the new council.
I think I would, I would be okay with that. I think it's important that we have the maternity leave and the adoption leave and the parental leave. But the medical leave, I mean, it's hit or miss, right? I mean, any of us, we all know, somebody could get sick on any given day kind of thing. But I do understand that the new council has to have the opportunity to be able to kind of create some policies based on what they they foresee as well. But I personally really like the maternity and adoption and parental part of this. So I would be okay taking or leaving the medical part.
Okay. Counselor Roba, you had your hand up. Then Counselor Walizer?
Thank you, Your Worship. I actually like the suggestion of taking the medical leave off or adjusting it so that the medical leave stays the same as it is right now, where it's brought to council. That's basically deemed as per each case. I think that the parental and the, I also like what Councilor Frank said, the three months versus the six months, because I too felt six months was a bit long when you're in office. And if it had to be deemed further than six than three months, then also come to council. I think that just leaves us in a spot where we're not going to have more than one or two people off at a time if needed.
Okay.
So I like all their suggestions.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Walizer. Then Councilor Ford?
Thank you, Your Worship. From a procedural standpoint, once this initial policy is created, any council that follows ours would have the ability to bring it back to council for revision. Is that correct?
Yes.
So then there would be no tying of hands, because just as we have updated other policies and procedures, the council of the day could find at that time that.
Good subject.
They need to make their own revisions.
Yeah, it's it's true, Counselor Walizer. These are all our policies are all living documents. A council member can bring forward at any point in time. That's true. So are you suggesting, are you okay with the three month change and with the parental? And the other, what was the other?
Actually, I just want someone to make a motion. Let them make the motion.
Okay, I guess city clerk just wants a motion. Okay, Councilor Roba?
I would like to make a motion that we send this back and have it changed so that it's three months for the parental, the adoption, and returning leave. I would like to remove the medical leave with being it just as a shall clause, and then have it put back in where it comes to council per basis, as it is right now in our existing policy.
On a case by case, yep.
Right, that's how we do it right now. So I think it's working for us quite well. And, right, that's how we do it right now, so I think it's working for us quite well, and we haven't had anybody that's needed it for an extended length of time, but I think if that happened, I think we look at each case, because again, if somebody was able to do a portion of their job due to a broken leg, but they just couldn't attend meetings or et cetera, like, I just think it's, it's good if we leave it on a case-by-case basis, and I think the three months for parental adoption and maternity would be suffice. And again, if more is needed, then I think that's when it comes back to council as a case-by-case.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ford, you did have your hand up. No more comments? Not seeing any hands up?
Second.
Do we need a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Counselor Walezer, are you okay with this? I guess we'll find out when we go to the vote, eh? Okay, not seeing any hands up. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Travis, were you in favor?
I am.
Okay, thanks. Gord, Gord has his way. With his great, with his great advances in artificial intelligence, everybody will have their own robot, and you can send your robot in your place to council chambers. But that's a few months. That's a few months. Okay, good night, Gord. Okay, moving forward, under Executive Reports, we have from the Parks Manager, Herbicide Tender for a Three-Year Term. To award a company a three-year 2024-25-26 contract for applying non-selective, comma, selective herbicides and to control the noxious and nuisance weeds on city-owned properties. The city of Estevan contracts out the herbicide application for weed control within the city. The city has approximately 76 hectares of land herbicides that are applied. This includes parks, green spaces, soccer fields, ball, baseball diamonds, other areas that need to be sprayed. This is to include noxious nuisance weeds that need to be controlled according to the Saskatchewan Weed Control Act. These include leafy spurge, barley foxtail, dandelion, thistle, absinthe. Three companies put in a request for a quote Pride Upkeep, Southeast Tree Care, and Turf Tenders Incorporated. The evaluation criteria for the request for quote was as follows. Rate per hour, equipment, safety and compliance, experience, references, and valid pesticide licenses. Pride Upkeep met all five of the evaluation criteria. Their rate for one-person crew is 85 an hour, for a two-person crew, 145. For this rate, herbicide is extra. Their equipment lists various pieces of equipment that could be used in the city for applying herbicides. For safety and compliance, Pride Upkeep sent a detailed description of their safety program, a long wear certificate from Energy Safety Canada, and a letter from Health Canada, pesticide compliance program, saying they are compliant. They also include a copy of their pesticide service license from the Saskatchewan government. Southeast Tree Care rate for one person is 125 per hour, for two-person, 175 per hour. For this rate, herbicide is extra. Their equipment lists various pieces of equipment that could be used in the city for, to apply herbicides. On the request for quote, it stated Southeast Tree Care is Core certified, is part of the safety programs, is NetWorld, Comply Works, or Avita member. There is no documented proof in the quote, no references were given, no proof of processing a valid pesticide license. Turf Tenders Incorporated rate included the price for herbicides. Turf Tenders Incorporated price include two workers, equipment, and herbicide. For selective, $200 per hour, and non-selective is 220 per hour. There's also $100 per hour water and filling fee. The city of Estevan uses more non-selective than selective herbicide within the city. References have been included in the quote, but no documentation for safety and compliance. In the quote, there is certification of completion of landscape applicator course, but no proof of license from the Saskatchewan government. Then you have the breakdown in brackets. Then we have the options and solutions. Number one, hire Pride Upkeep Limited to complete the herbicide application for the city of Estevad for the years 24, 25, 26. Hire Southeast Tree Care Limited to complete the herbicide application for city of Estevad for 24, 25, 26. Or number three, hire Turf Tenders Incorporated to complete the herbicide application for the city of Estevan for 24, 25, 26. The recommendation after all of that, to keep Pride Upkeep for the three-year herbicide application, as they meet all five evaluation criteria. Pride Upkeep Limited has the most equipment in their fleet for spraying and very comprehensive safety program as provided. So what's the wish of council, now that I've put you to sleep? Counselor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I'll make the motion to go with a recommendation, but also, can we, Shannon and our communications just work really hard this year to let people know what parks are being sprayed? I know that in past years, signs have been put up in the park, but then, you know, the wind blows them away, just various things happen where people don't get to see the signs, and then they're, they're upset because their dogs are playing on the parks, or whatever it may be. So just we can have a clear communication with the community as to what, where they should be staying off of and everything at the time would be really, really great.
Okay, thank you. Good points. I'm through, I'm sure through the good offices of city manager, we can make that happen, shout it, if you talk to Jaclyn, and then we could get out on our city page or maybe other communication that which areas will be done the day before. Councilor Roba?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I was also going to just mention to make, if we can also, I'm sure we already do, but work with the RM of Estevan, just because they surround the border of city of Estevan, and there's a lot of invasive weeds that they battle every year, and so I just think good communication between the city and the RM will go far in making sure we get ahead of all the weeds that flow our way or their way.
Yeah, good point. And also, Shannon, I'm sure you have a contact from our surrounding RMs and keep that dialogue going, which is always helpful.
Also in Pride's package that they sent, they will be working with the RM of Estevan to help with their noxious and nuisance weeds, so this will work really well.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. I think that should satisfy council, and I know when we get together with our liaison meetings, that's one of the top things, is noxious weeds, so appreciate that. So Counselor Roba, was that a seconded for that motion, the second?
Yes, your worship, it was. Sorry, I meant to say.
Okay, no, no problem. Okay, any further questions, comments? Oh, Counselor Walezer? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, your worship. This would be a very good use of our Boyant Alert app. That way, each day that a spraying occurs, people can open their app and know immediately what park to plant that morning.
Yes, that's a good catch, good idea. Thank you, Counselor Walezer. We'll include that as well. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, under Executive Reports, we have from the Public Works Manager, Dust Control Tender for 24. And, thank you, Haley, for sticking around. Basically, Dust Control, the recommendation is that the 24 Dust Control program be awarded to fourth distributors at a cost of .375 per liter, including shipping and application of the product. Dust Control program, which includes product and application required for the program. Public tender opening was held at City Hall 2:30 p.m. on April 2, 24. This magnesium product that we use has been used the last few years by the city of Estevan. The product is stored in tanks at the RM of Estevan Yard by fourth distributors, and is readily available for our timely applications. The city of Estevan is pleased with the results and longevity of the liquid magnesium product. Rhodes Drainage recommends, before we purchase a new product for Dust Control with a different chemical makeup, we first require test trips in our city to prove the effectiveness and its longevity of the proposed new product. And then the following tenders, we had fourth distributors, NSC Minerals, Green Earth, Prairie Energy Resources, and of course, we're also responsible for several gravel roads within the city's current boundaries. Some of our roads require only one application annually, while others require two, given the amount of vehicle use. And then we've got all of, once a year, twice a year, and the delegate.